Buenas noches. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Son las 5:32 y soy Teresa Mosqueta, presidente de la Comisión de Derechos de Higiene, Salud y Energía en el Servicio de Derechos de Higiene. Hoy es martes, 21 de mayo de 2019, y la Comisión de Derechos de Higiene y Energía en el Servicio de Derechos de Higiene se desplazará. Estoy acompañada de Aaron House, gerente de políticas en la oficina, y Faridé Cuevas y Aritha Basu de nuestras oficinas también. Si necesitan ayuda, por favor, tengan libre de hacerlo, nos pueden decir. Queremos hacer algunas anuncios especiales antes de empezar nuestro programa hoy. Para los espectadores, queremos recordar que hay cuidado infantil esta noche. Sabemos que las reuniones de tarde son difíciles, y las reuniones de día también son difíciles, y estamos tratando de hacer estas reuniones más accesibles especialmente para las familias trabajadoras. Si los espectadores necesitan cuidado infantil, por favor, dennos saber. Van a cerrar el check-in de cuidado infantil a las 6 de la tarde, así que dennos saber. Tengan libre de hacerlo, Faridé o Aritha, y denles saber. También para los que no tomaron el transporte público aquí y tienen su auto, queremos asegurarnos de que esta es una reunión accesible y accesible también. Hay parqueo en C Park Garage ubicado entre Cherry y James Street, entre las Avenidas 5 y 6, a un precio descuento de $5 esta noche. Si tienen su auto allí, dennos saber y les daremos un sticker de parqueo. Y el parque cerramos a las 10 de la tarde, pero les prometo que no vamos a estar aquí cuatro horas y media, con la tierra. Hola, bienvenidos, miembros del Consejo. Bienvenidos, miembros del Consejo. ¿Cómo estás?
Bueno.
Bueno, gracias por estar aquí. También queremos asegurarnos de que los espectadores sepan que si tienen dificultades para escucharlos, si tienen algún desafío para escucharlos, dennos saber. Tenemos ayudas de escucha y un sistema aquí para que podamos hacerlo más accesible para los que necesitan asistencia de escucha en la sala. Así que no se sientan como si fuera cualquier momento que puedan venir. Si hay algún desafío, simplemente dennos saber. Estamos muy emocionadas de estar aquí. Gracias de nuevo, miembros del Consejo, por unirse a nosotros.
Gracias, presidente Mosqueta. Solo quería disculparme en advance. Tal vez tenga que ir un poco temprano debido a otras cosas que no puedo evitar.
Las reuniones de tarde son desafiantes, así que aprecio que estéis aquí. Y hemos estado en varias reuniones de comunidad en Fort Lawton en el pasado. Creo que los espectadores y el público nos han visto y hemos visto a muchos de ustedes. Solo he tenido la oportunidad de trabajar en esto durante el último año y medio. Pero quiero recordarles que esta es una conversación que ha estado en marcha ahora 15 años. Este es también el cuarto tiempo que hemos tenido esta discusión en nuestra comunidad, en nuestra comisión, solo este año solo. Y el proceso para hoy es, voy a hacer unas recortes breves de abertura. Kittle y Tracy de Central Staff también nos unirán para algunas recortes breves de abertura, que serán de 10 a 15 minutos, y luego vamos a hacer un comentario público durante el resto de la reunión. Así que si aún no han registrado, todavía hay un poco de tiempo. Tenemos algunos que ya han registrado, lo cual apreciamos mucho. Estamos aquí hoy para hablar sobre el proyecto de desarrollo de vivienda accesible en Fort Lawton. Este plan incluye una variedad de opciones de vivienda accesible, incluyendo la apoyo de vivienda para los seniores, viviendas rentables para familias de pobre ingreso y individuos, oportunidades de propiedad de casa accesibles para nuestra comunidad. Todos sabemos, como hemos discutido en esta comisión y yo sé en el Consejo de Derechos de Derecho de la Comisión de Consejo antes, la vivienda accesible es la crisis de nuestra ciudad. Esta es una crisis que afecta a las ciudades del sur, arriba y abajo de nuestra costa y a través de nuestro país. Sabemos que en este condado solo necesitamos al menos 156,000 unidades de vivienda accesible solo para satisfacer la necesidad actual, ni siquiera incluyendo a los que vienen a la ciudad para buenas oportunidades económicas, para buscar sanctuarias, inmigrantes y refugiados, y para comenzar sus propios negocios, como hemos visto a muchas personas moverse a esta área para la estabilidad económica también. Uno de los mayores desafíos es crear nuevas opciones de vivienda accesibles y trabajar con nuestros desarrolladores sin fines de lucro para asegurarnos de que mientras creemos más tierras disponibles, que en realidad estamos creando oportunidades para el desarrollo de comunidad, vivienda que cumpla con las necesidades de nuestra comunidad. Una de las primeras cosas que hicimos en esta comisión el año pasado fue pasar la política de disposición de tierras, básicamente diciendo que nuestra ciudad debe dejar de vender tierras públicas para conectar los gastos y en lugar de eso, mantener esa tierra pública, usarla para construir viviendas accesibles, crear parques y espacios abiertos, espacios verdes para niños, seniores y familias. Gracias. Y sabemos que es realmente importante hacer eso para preservar la tierra en la ciudad que tiene recursos muy limitados, pero también es importante para nosotros asegurarnos de que cuando tenemos tierra pública, que la estamos convirtiendo en vivienda accesible. Fort Lawton nos proporciona una oportunidad única no solo para construir vivienda, sino para obtener propiedad de una parte de esta propiedad del gobierno federal a no costo significativo, una parte significativa de la tierra pública está disponible para esta ciudad a no costo, y que podemos usar esa tierra para construir vivienda accesible y crear servicios que nuestra ciudad necesita desesperadamente para las personas que experimentan la desaparición. Bienvenidos, miembro del Consejo. Gracias mucho por estar aquí con nosotros, lo aprecio. Miembro del Consejo, también has estado involucrado en muchas de las reuniones de comunidad en el pasado, y sé que usted y todos los miembros del Consejo han oído los llamados no solo para vivienda, sino para elementos fuertes de parques del plan, y que necesitamos preservar áreas para espacios verdes y espacio abierto para jugar y recreación. Quiero reiterar que este proyecto tiene más del 60% del sitio preservado para parques abiertos, grandes parques y preservación de entornos. En enero de 2018 tuve la oportunidad de asistir a la audiencia pública de Magnolia sobre la declaración ambiental de draft sobre el proyecto, y escuché el amplio apoyo de vecinos, defensores y miembros de la comunidad sobre la necesidad de avanzar con el plan en Fort Lawton. También escuché y reconozco en esa reunión, también queremos asegurarnos de que hay acceso al transporte público y acceso a buenas escuelas. Y esos son dos de los temas que presentamos en esta comisión la semana pasada para asegurarnos de que estamos mirando para mejorar el acceso al transporte público, que estamos escalando la frecuencia en la que vienen los autobuses, y que estamos trabajando con el Consejo de Escuelas para evaluar y crear nuevo acceso a las escuelas públicas. El 4 de marzo de este año también me acompañó la Oficina de Higiene, también me acompañó la Oficina de Higiene, audiencia pública en Magnolia, y de nuevo escuché la redraft del plan de desarrollo y el fuerte apoyo para el proyecto. Uno de los que escuché en la audiencia pública del 4 de marzo fue mirando la necesidad de que reevaluemos cuántos parques de parques de superficie necesitamos, y luego si alguno de nuestros amigos que estaban sentados en el canal Seattle debatiendo conmigo hace aproximadamente dos o tres meses están viendo o escuchando el público, una de las cosas que los espectadores dijeron en la reunión fue, en lugar de este parque de parques de superficie, ¿qué pasaría si creamos un entorno más wild como el de la vida salvaje que está en la área? Idealmente, si tuviéramos más hermanos azules, este sería el lugar para ellos. Y entonces lo que hicimos fue regresar y trabajamos con los amigos de Parks and Recreation y dijimos, esto me responde. De hecho, me encantaría reevaluar todos nuestros parques de parques de superficie en toda la ciudad y ver qué podemos hacer para escalar atrás los parques de superficie concreta que tenemos, que francamente no están creando espacio verde o vivienda para los espectadores. Debido a ese llamado a la acción, lo que veréis de nosotros, lo que veréis de mí y los amendamientos que estamos presentando es una reducción en el parque, así que lo reduciremos al menos un tercio, para que haya menos parques de parques y más espacio wild para nuestro entorno. Muy emocionada de trabajar con Parks and Rec en eso, y quiero apreciar y aplaudir sus esfuerzos para avanzar rápidamente en eso, pero principalmente aplaudir a la comunidad por traer ese tema adelante. Así que mientras todos ustedes vayan hacia las mikes, por favor, sepan que estamos escuchando vuestras ideas y vuestros comentarios y sugerencias, aunque estamos al final de un periodo de 15 años aquí, todavía hay oportunidad para ustedes de darnos ideas. Y con eso, Tracy Ratscliffe y Kettle Freeman están aquí para darnos una breve presentación sobre qué son las legislaciones de rezona y planes de desarrollo de nuevo, y luego ustedes escucharán un poco de contexto y nos llevarán a profundizar en audiencia pública. Tuvimos una primera revisión del plan en la reunión del 16 de abril en la Comisión de Derechos de Higiene y Energía en el Servicio de Higiene en el Servicio de Higiene. El 2 de mayo tuvimos un profundizado desde el departamento y socios de la comunidad que van a implementar diferentes elementos. Quiero señalar que el 16 de mayo, la reunión de Derechos de Higiene, Salud y Energía en el Servicio de Derechos de Higiene tuvo presentaciones del Departamento de Higiene sobre la conveyencia de la propiedad del gobierno federal a la ciudad, del Departamento de Parques sobre el progreso del amendamiento que acabo de mencionar, y ayudando a crear espacio verde adicional. Escuchamos desde el Departamento de Transporte y nuestros socios de la comunidad sobre lo que tomará para pasar la evaluación de obtener servicios de autobuses adicionales, y también tuvimos a nuestros amigos del distrito escolar también hablando de, primero, los campos de juego que la escuela va a estar considerando, y luego también servicios adicionales que van a entrar en el futuro. Después de esta audiencia hoy, tendremos una discusión y posible voto sobre el plan de desarrollo de nuevo y la legislación de rezona en el 6 de junio, Comisión de Derechos de Higiene y Energía en el Servicio de Derechos de Higiene, creo que empieza a las 9:30 aquí en las chambres del Consejo. Y antes de avanzar, después de estas dos presentaciones, tendremos una audiencia pública. Solo quiero asegurarme de que eso está notado en nuestra agenda. Si pudiera tener la indulgencia de nuestros colegas, me gustaría mover la aprobación de la agenda, incluyendo el comentario público después de nuestra presentación de Central Staff.
Sí.
¿Todos en favor? No, pues genial. Tracy y Kittle, muchas gracias por estar aquí. ¿Por qué no nos lleváis a través de la revisión que tenéis? Cualquier presentación que tengáis para nosotros hoy.
No, simplemente verbalmente lo paso porque creo que ustedes y el público lo han oído una y otra vez, así que hoy solo...
Ya sé. Y para nuestro espectador, tenemos boletines de legislación en la mesa, así que si no lo tomaste, por favor, tengan libre de hacerlo. Si quieres que los traiga, simplemente señala, y lo harán. Y también hay hojas de firma para cualquiera que viniera tarde. Continuaremos con el comentario público aquí en un segundo. Gracias, Tracy y Kittle.
Cool. Así que hay dos piezas de legislación que son el tema de la audiencia pública hoy. La primera pieza de legislación adoptaría y aprobaría la solicitud de la ciudad de la propiedad federal sobrepuesta en Fort Lawton, incluyendo un plan de desarrollo de nuevo y la solicitud de asistencia a los inútiles, que es el appendix H a la legislación. Como ustedes dijeron, el plan de desarrollo de nuevo creará hasta 235 unidades de vivienda. Además, el plan proporcionará 21 a 22 acres de parques y área de recreación, incluyendo aproximadamente 13 acres de recreación pasiva, hasta seis acres para el desarrollo de dos campos atleticos multipropósitos y algunos parques, entre cuatro y cinco acres de tierra forestal en la esquina occidental de Fort Lawton que en realidad se incorporará en Discovery Park, y luego, como también mencionó, el reutilización de una estructura existente hacia el norte como una instalación de mantenimiento de parques. Y el resumen de esta información está incluido en ese boleto en la diosa.
Muchas gracias, Tracy. De nuevo, el resumen de la información incluida en el boleto en la diosa, si no lo tomaste, toma uno. Kittle.
Claro. Así que uno de los propósitos de la audiencia pública de esta noche es cumplir con una obligación de código para una pieza de legislación de rezona. Cada ley de rezona está subjecta a una audiencia pública obligada a cumplir con código. La ley del Consejo 119510 rezona aproximadamente 10 acres de la redevolución de 34 acres de la zona de la misma familia de 7200 a una zona de baja rentabilidad multi-familia con un m1 mandatory de affordability. Para aquellos que no están familiarizados con lo que una zona de baja rentabilidad 2 permitirá, permite apartamentos de subida hasta una altura de aproximadamente 40 pies y vivienda asociada a la terreno, así que casas de fila y casas de pueblo, ese tipo de vivienda. Así que el proyecto en la ley del Consejo 119510 sería cambiar la mapa de uso oficial de la tierra, la mapa de zoning, para permitir esos tipos de uso a través de un cambio de familia de una casa a una zona de baja rentabilidad.
Excelente. Una de las cosas que sé que tiene gran interés a los tres miembros del Consejo que están aquí es crear lo más posible de vivienda accesible, especialmente en tierras publicamente propiedad, ¿pueden hablar un poco sobre los bordes laterales que nos están puesta con la declaración ambiental de impacto, así es, y dónde llegamos en términos de vivienda accesible y qué está ante nosotros ahora?
Claro. Así que Tracy, puede llenar aquí si estoy perdiendo algunos detalles, pero la revisión ambiental que se hizo para este proyecto miró una designación de zoning hasta la zona de baja rentabilidad, así que eso esencialmente establece el límite superior para la consideración del desarrollo que podría ocurrir en esta área de rezona. ¿Hay algo más que estoy perdiendo aquí, Tracy?
No.
Okay. Así que estamos haciendo el máximo permitido bajo la evaluación ambiental de impacto existente en términos de unidades de construcción para vivienda accesible.
Eso es correcto. No soy tan familiar con Tracy como con algunos de los parámetros del plan de desarrollo mismo y lo que se propuso allí, así que no puedo decir que este es necesariamente el máximo, pero para los propósitos de la solicitud de la ciudad a los feds, este es el proyecto, y creo que busca lograr un equilibrio.
Okay, genial. Una cosa que voy a hacer, y lo siento en advance para nuestro equipo y nuestra oficina, estoy mirando a nuestro personal aquí, es que tuvimos una presentación muy buena de PowerPoint en la última reunión de comisión que señalaba los diversos componentes del plan. Tal vez podamos hacer algunos de esos disponibles para los espectadores mientras están esperando que su nombre sea llamado, y pueden recogerlos. Si podemos maybe sacar eso de nuestra última reunión de comisión y hacer algunas copias disponibles, eso sería genial. Una de las cosas que creo que es importante es para reiterar los aspectos de la vivienda y el espacio público, el espacio abierto. Así que, ¿podría hablar un poco sobre la preservación del 60% de la tierra para espacio público abierto?
Claro. Así que esa fue la pieza de la que hablé en términos de 21 a 22 acres de parques y área de recreación. De nuevo, 13 acres de recreación pasiva, seis acres para los hasta dos campos atleticos multipropósitos que pueden desarrollarse por el Distrito escolar de Seattle o por el Departamento de Parques, cuatro a cinco acres de tierra forestada en la esquina occidental de Fort Lawton, y luego de nuevo, el reutilización de esa estructura existente para la instalación de parques.
Comentarios de nuestros colegas del Consejo, miembro del Consejo.
Gracias, miembro del Consejo Mosqueta. Solo quería recordar lo que usted dijo correctamente, y también lo que Tracy y Kittle estaban diciendo, que es, primero, el deseo que nuestra comunidad y todos aquí tenemos, el deseo de maximizar la vivienda accesible en tierras públicas, pero también, también agradecer al consejero por el enfasis en el espacio abierto y campos atleticos y así sucesivamente, porque creo que eso también está en la dirección correcta, porque lo que estamos diciendo a través de eso es que todos los hogares, independientemente de su ingreso y sus hijos, merecen lo mejor de todas las instalaciones, y la vivienda obviamente es el componente primario de un nivel de vida decente, pero no es solo que es también acceso a espacios abiertos especialmente para los niños, ya saben, espacio para jugar, y así todo eso va en conjunto, y niños de hogares más ricos, hogares de mayor ingreso tienen eso, y se lo toma por hecho, pero no es verdad para los personas de pobre ingreso.
Estoy atrapada por el hecho de que cuando vamos a visitar otros países, por ejemplo, solo tuve la oportunidad de ir a Berlín el año pasado, y la vivienda es muy densa allí, pero lo que también tienen es la preservación de grandes espacios públicos. Y mientras creamos más vivienda, una cosa que es realmente crítica para nosotros hacer es también reconocer que los parques son nuevos jardines de la gente, y es un gran lugar para aquellos con todos los edades y capacidades y razas, etnias y géneros para poder tener un lugar para jugar y vivir en la ciudad que ellos no tienen para trabajar, retirarse, estudiar o vivir. Miembro del Consejo, ¿algún otro comentario de usted? Sé que ha estado trabajando en esto durante un tiempo.
Estoy emocionada de verlo materializarse.
Okay, genial.
Pronto voy a pasar al siguiente paso.
Miembro del Consejo, lo siento. Kittle, ¿tiene algo que quisiera señalar en el PowerPoint o simplemente por ahí solo para reconocer?
No, solo esto parece, quiero decir, esta es la imagen particular de esta presentación, así que probablemente sea lo mejor de todos para los espectadores orientarse al área de desarrollo de nuevo.
Excelente. Bueno, muchas gracias a ambos de ustedes por todo su trabajo y a todos nuestros socios de la comunidad, pasados colegas del Consejo que no están aquí en la diosa con nosotros hoy y que desde entonces han pasado a la retirada. Estamos esperando a llevar esto adelante, como dijo el consejero O'Brien, y hacer este plan en acción. Así que con eso, creo que vamos a seguir y comenzar con el comentario público. ¿Algún otro comentario de nuestros colegas del Consejo? Okay. Así que muchas gracias a todos por registrarse y por estar aquí. Quiero reconocer también a Carlene, del Departamento de la Comisión de Pacheco, que también está voluntariando con nosotros. Si está aquí, debería levantar la mano, pero muchas gracias a su personal por ser parte de esto también. La primera persona es Mary Steele Klein. Por favor, hagan su camino al micrófono. Gracias, Mary. Y David Hines, muchas gracias, David.
Soy Mary Steele Klein, una advocate de vivienda de pobre ingreso larga. Yo misma he sido sin salida cuando mis hijos eran más pequeños, pero opongo este proyecto fuertemente porque es una intención de crear un ghetto, una comunidad socialista comunista que es permanentemente pobre. Estas son palabras que fueron usadas en la presentación del SHAs en marzo. El aspecto permanentemente pobre de esto es devastador para las familias involucradas. Eso significa que si trabajan o de otra forma mejoran a sí mismos, pueden ser evitados. Ahora, tengo un problema con eso, y creo que alguien ha tomado una mirada completamente jangista a este problema, y creo que el problema es enorme. Creo que el proyecto es absurdo, completamente mal dirigido, y porque todo el Consejo virtualmente se va, se convertirá en el futuro aquí para ejecutar este plan, no hay razón para proceder con esto. Nadie está aquí de la ciudad. Ustedes van, están preparados para las elecciones, que puede o no suceder. No sé quién está escuchándonos. Y lo que más me preocupa es el mezcla en la comunidad de pobre ingreso isolada de 600 niños con un grupo de enfermos de hogar que son conocidos como adictos a drogas y mentalmente enfermos, y esos niños que están dessupervisados porque no hay empleo dentro de fácil alcance, serán expuestos a estos enfermos. Ahora, con los campos de juego, este es un problema en particular.
Gracias, Mary. Su tiempo ha sido expuesto. Gracias por dejar eso con nosotros.
Esto es lo que va a ser en el campo de juego.
Aprecio sus comentarios. David, bienvenido. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. La siguiente persona será Kelsey Hamlin.
Menos parques de parques de parques, más vivienda. Embracemos la naturaleza que ya está allí. La iglesia católica se ha roto en el núcleo. Todavía hay pedifiles pervertidos en desdicha, y la iglesia sigue expandiendo un imperio de real estate para lucir. El consejo de la ciudad debe dejar de probar su alineación y no tocar con los desarrolladores no calificados y los sin fines de lucro mezclando religión y estado para política garantizada. El consejo de la ciudad debe... perdón. El consejo de la ciudad debe rechazar la iglesia católica de principio. La iglesia no puede ni siquiera y no recibirá la seguro para dejar que los pobres se laven los pies o bañarse. Todo esto es porque la seguro no los vinculará sin una tarifa exorbitante porque la iglesia católica ha demostrado ser inconfiable y devota. ¿Por qué el consejo de la ciudad se cansa de resucitar un plan de negocios de 13 años que nunca fue mejorado eligiendo a un desarrollador adecuado? Hemos sufrido los fracasos del sistema de bienestar social en manos de la iglesia católica y los otros llamados sin fines de lucro que se rican a causa de la desaparición y mentiras sobre lo perdido. La diócesis de la cruz es corrupta como el dios. De hecho, el imperio de la realidad de la iglesia católica se ha convertido en un imperio para lucir. Solo miren el edificio que poseen en Belltown donde solían tener el centro de la feria. Ahora se ha rentado a dos clubes de noche que sirven principalmente alcohol y pagan el alquiler de la iglesia. La vivienda real es la única manera en América, permitiendo más centrales de almacén son cosmeticamente pintadas en el exterior para engañar, prueba de la industria social de bienestar es el problema. El consejo de la ciudad debe quitar a la iglesia católica de la lista de quienes obtienen Fort Lawton, porque la iglesia solo ayuda a las personas que se garantiza obtener un cheque de bienestar del gobierno para que pueda transferirse inmediatamente a una banca de la iglesia católica. La iglesia católica debería quitar su exemptione sin fines de lucro de su imperio de real estate y su lobbymiento político durante la última elección. Durante los debates de la presidenta, la iglesia católica negó la participación de los inútiles en preguntas. Todo estaba controlado por un operativo de la iglesia católica. Y de todos modos, necesitamos viviendas reales, no favores políticos para una iglesia religiosa que viola la separación de iglesia y estado y se rica construyendo un imperio de real estate de baja calidad a gastos de contribuyentes y donantes.
Gracias, David. La siguiente persona es Kelsey Hamlin, y luego seguida por Elizabeth Krenner. Muchas gracias, Kelsey.
Hola.
Y usted puede sacarla.
Sí. Gracias, miembros del consejo, por todo el trabajo que han hecho y todo lo demás que han trabajado. Trabajo en el Instituto de Situación Magnolia, un think tank de sostenibilidad. Todos sabemos de la crisis climática, pero quiero enfatizar cómo cada decisión que tomamos desde este punto en adelante, aunque debería haber ocurrido hace un tiempo, es paramounte. Con eso dicho, SiteLine sabe que necesitamos construir vivienda para los residentes de Seattle. Haciendo eso a la escala que necesitamos de una manera verde significa que necesitamos construir cosas como apartamentos, que reducen los GHG por aproximadamente la mitad por persona en comparación con un solo hogar detenido. SiteLine también sabe cuán falsa es pensar que construir es a riesgo con el medio ambiente o espacios verdes. La oportunidad de revender Fort Lawton no es una de esto o aquello. Podemos construir vivienda y mantener espacios verdes. De hecho, el crecimiento de las árboles de Seattle ocurre más durante el desarrollo urbano. Sería remiso si no hubiera mencionado que mantener Fort Lawton así, es decir, dentro de distancia de caminatas de hogares que típicamente costan $939,000 en Magnolia, es un problema de equidad. Estudios muestran una gran brecha de acceso a espacios verdes entre ingresos y entre razas. Hay desavances de salud asociados con esto. Al no construir mas vivienda accesible en uno de los climáticos, en uno de, perdón, en uno de los lugares raros de la tierra libre que Seattle ha dejado, que informará los alquileres, pretendemos que la crisis climática no está realmente sucediendo y que no hay división de la existencia y la no existencia sucediendo en Seattle. Es un desgracia que no construyamos más, pero sería aún más desgraciado construir nada. Dejar que la gente vive más cerca de los trabajos significa menos personas conduciendo viajes largas, menos tráfico, menos contaminación. Esto también tiene impactos en la salud, estrés, cargos financieros, el aire que respiramos y los bebés respiramos. No podemos permitirlo en todo sentido de la palabra, porque quién puede permitirlo aquí realmente, no hacer los cambios de sentido común de agregar vivienda multifamilia a Fort Lawton.
Muchas gracias. Lo aprecio. Isabel, seguida por Michael George.
Okay. Hola, miembros del Consejo, y gracias a todos por estar aquí. Así que mi principal problema con este plan es que no creo que haya sido hecho de la manera correcta, y no creo que sea muy creativo. Así que según lo he oído, ustedes han propuesto gastar $90 a $97 millones construyendo o viviendo a 600 personas ocho años más tarde. Ahora, nadie puede ver hacia el futuro, así que realmente no sabemos dónde vamos a estar en ocho años. Así que este tipo de plan que es permanente, creo, debería quedarse a la próxima comisión de la ciudad para decidir. Además, el plan que tengo costaría $40 millones. Sería involucrando 23 plots de tierra vacía, tal vez una plot en esta tierra, tal vez una plot en Roy y Aurora, donde hay un parque de fosa vacío propiedad de S dot que no ha sido usado en años. Y podríamos usar contenedores de envío. Así que podría, con mi plan aquí, ustedes están bienvenidos a tener una copia, podría vivir en cualquier lugar de 4,048 a 8,096 personas con $40 millones usando 575 contenedores de envío. Veo esto como mucho más, no solo verde, porque estos contenedores de envío a menudo terminan en el ciclo de residuos, lo que es por lo que Starbucks los usa para construir tiendas, y Japón los usa para construir centros de compras, pero también son movibles, colgables y muy modificables. Son como Legos. Puedes hacer lo que quieras con ellos. Y ustedes saben, entiendo la necesidad de vivir con personas que tienen un ingreso fijo, y ahora que estoy corriendo por el consejo de la ciudad, entiendo la posición en la que ustedes todos están, así que no llamaré a ustedes o ser malos. Pero creo que esta es realmente la solución más viable. Costaría $870,000 para ocho empleados en cada sitio para vivir en cualquier lugar de 176 a 352 personas. Y si funciona, podríamos venderlo para lucir cuando ya no es necesario.
Muchas gracias. Nosotros tomaremos su mano. Michael George, seguido por George Smith. Gracias. Bienvenido, Michael.
Gracias, y gracias por invitarme. Mi nombre es Michael George. Estoy corriendo por el consejo de la ciudad, y estoy corriendo en una plataforma de asegurarse de que la ciudad trabaja para personas de todos los edades y ingresos. Y cuando miro este proyecto, creo que ustedes tienen el equilibrio correcto. Hay espacio abierto, y lo que realmente me hace feliz es que hay vivienda accesible para seniores y familias. Esa es una necesidad crítica en esta ciudad, y te condeno por realmente mover esto a través de la línea. También me gustaría decir que he estado dibujando el entorno para obtener una perspectiva del entorno, y he oído un par de cosas que me gustaría justamente resaltar. Mucha de lo que escucho es que, ustedes saben, soy por este proyecto, pero mi vecino, no le digan. Y es sorprendente cuántas veces escucho eso. Hay mucho más apoyo que yo hubiera pensado en los entornos inmediatamente rodeando esto. También he oído que para las personas que apoyan, quieren ver más servicio de transporte. El 33 necesita correr más frecuentemente. Solo estoy trayendo preocupaciones. Y el sistema escolar público realmente necesita más capacidad, lo que ustedes parecen que están realmente trabajando con el Consejo de Escuelas para hacer. Lo último que me gustaría decir es que hay una falta de espacio de cuidado en ese entorno.[1658.58] It comes up time after time. Windrose Daycare, which is just a block away from this project, is having trouble finding room to expand. There is a great need, so I know it at this point probably can't be incorporated into this project, but it would really be an olive branch to the neighborhood if we had this housing, brought children in, and also brought daycare somewhere. The last thing I'd like to say is beyond all of this, it's a real human issue, the lack of affordable housing. So I really look forward to meeting the families that someday are going to be living in this project, whose lives are going to be bettered by this project. And I really want to thank all of you for taking the time, making the effort to really move this across the line. Thank you.
Thank you so much. George Smith, followed by James McIntosh. Welcome, George.
My name is George Smith. I'm a Magnolia resident. I live in council district seven, near the proposed development. I'm testifying tonight in favor of the application for surplus property and also for the rezoning. The need for affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals has been a crisis in our city for several years, and it's continuing to be a crisis. And this base closure is just an unbelievable opportunity. It's been thrust in our laps to have this kind of land in the heart of the city is just really remarkable. And the close proximity to employment, schools, and other amenities the neighborhood provides, I think, will make an excellent home for a lot of people. The other thing about this project that really excites me is it's a mix of people. There's older adults, families, children. It's like a micro community all to itself. That's, I think, a function of the fact that this project has the luxury of a lot of land, which you don't normally get in a nonprofit housing development opportunity. The last thing I'd like to just stress is I think housing, and many of us here, I think, probably feel the same way, that housing is a basic human right. And the city can't do enough, in my opinion, to try and secure more land for public ownership. My simple-minded solution to the crisis is we have to take as much housing out of the market as possible. The market will just continue to go up and up. If we can freeze land, get it into nonprofit ownership, we can keep housing affordable into the future. So I encourage you to take every opportunity you can to secure land for public use, because I think this, in the long run, is the most successful strategy. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next, we have James McIntosh, followed by Lisa Barnes.
Yes, hello, fellow city council members and parks personnel. My name is James McIntosh. I would like to see the city choose the alternative three, all parks alternative. I am a person who is visually impaired and cannot, you know, cannot drive. Here is why I personally favor alternative three. Let me tell you personally some things about the location and bus travel. It's way out on the edge of a bus route. It's way out on the edge of a bus line. Travel options for access to shopping and services are very limited. You have to transfer buses, especially this is very difficult with bags of groceries. There's just no direct route. It's very hard for Metro to change routing of buses. I've worked with Metro for years and very hard to work with the Magnolia area and other locations like West Seattle because, you know, service and ridership is pretty low in Magnolia, you know? A better alternative would be to develop the housing in areas where there is access to travel, shopping, services, and where all that's really available. Examples are Lower Queen Anne, Inner Bay, Magnolia Village, and those Lawton shopping districts. However, the park is accessible to the disabled by several bus routes. There's routes 19, 20, and 33 that go to the park. It was originally intended that this, one of the last and greatest, the best missing piece of Discovery Park, be included in the park. It's in the founding documents approved by the city in the early 1970s. So to quote from the Discovery Park master plan, "Discovery Park is a place of unsurpassed serenity, broad vistas, and unsurpassed shorelines, an open space of quiet and tranquility, a sanctuary away from the city, and the works of humankind are minimized."
Thank you very much, Mr. McIntosh. Thank you very much, Mr. McIntosh. We appreciate it. And if you'd like to relieve your written comments with us, you're welcome to, and anybody else is welcome to as well. Lisa Barnes, followed by Rosalyn Ton. Hello, Lisa.
Hi. I think the most important thing I can say is I'm so ready for this to be built. There's absolutely no reason, no good reason, not to build low-income and affordable housing right now. I think you all have done a very good job listening to concerns and incorporating those concerns and keep redoing the plan. It must be tiring. I really appreciate that it is for a range of income levels. I think that's awesome. I work at a nonprofit where we provide eviction prevention assistance, and I am seeing way too many people on the verge of being evicted. We do not need any more homeless people on the streets. We need housing that they can afford. And I see this in this project. Of course, I'd like to see more, but we got to take every opportunity to build that. The only other thing, I would love to see a P patch there. I think that would be pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa, and we will take that recommendation to parks. Rosalyn Ton, followed by Jessica Westgren.
Hi, my name is Rosalyn.
Oh, sorry, Rosalyn.
Yes.
I was pronouncing your name wrong.
That's okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm a resident of Magnolia. I grew up in Singapore, a very dense city with high government-provided homeownership. So I'm in support of affordable housing, but in this instance, I have to say that affordable housing needs to be offsite, and we need to annex Fort Lawton to Discovery Park. So here are my reasons. In terms of good urban planning, the most sensible thing to do is to increase density near resources and infrastructure like transportation lines, grocery stalls, and existing utilities, et cetera. Fort Lawton is not situated in a location for increasing this density. There are far more efficient places elsewhere in Seattle. Also, Fort Lawton is not situated in a location that can provide future ongoing support for these seniors and low-income folks. More and more people are coming to Seattle, as we know, and these people will seek out parks, especially Discovery Park. So annexing Fort Lawton to Discovery Park seems to me like the most logical thing to do. There are no other park land close to the city, and you will be able to find land for affordable housing elsewhere, but not for parks. So this entire project is estimated to cost $87 million. Homes for seniors would be budgeted to be 332 each. And anyway, it's going to be very expensive. So at what point would you say that it's too expensive? How about now? Lastly, there will be 235 units built. Is that enough? That these will be built eight years from now? Is this going to solve the problem that we have right now with the crisis that we face? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rosalyn. Appreciate it. Jessica Westgren, followed by Neil Starkman. Hello, Jessica.
Thank you, council members and staff, for your time this evening. My name is Jessica Westgren, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Seattle Renters Commission. The Seattle Renters Commission urges the city to move forward with the plan to build 238 units of affordable housing at Fort Lawton as quickly as possible. Affordability is the single largest issue that renters in Seattle face today. As the city gets more expensive, renters are forced to either give a greater share of each paycheck to rent or leave the city. Entire communities are wiped out by displacement. Working people struggle to pay rent every month. Thousands of our neighbors sleep on the street. We need to build as much affordable housing as possible so that all renters can live in the city that we love. The Fort Lawton development is an excellent opportunity for the city to build 238 affordable units. The housing will be next to Discovery Park, which provides much-needed proximity to green space usually reserved for wealthy homeowners. However, we need to do more. It has been over 10 years since Fort Lawton was first declared surplus land. Within the time we've been talking about Fort Lawton, average rent in the city has risen over 60%. We welcome every unit of affordable housing at Fort Lawton, but we need to do better. When the next Fort Lawton-like opportunity arises, we should build more affordable housing faster. We should widen the AMI requirement so that affordable housing includes our neighbors both higher and lower than 60% AMI. And the city should raise more revenue for affordable housing to fund the backlog of shovel-ready projects currently available to affordable housing developers. The affordability crisis that Seattle renters face must be addressed with the utmost urgency. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Neil Starkman, followed by Karen Nims. And just for the viewing public's knowledge, we do have PowerPoint presentations available. If you don't mind putting these on the counter over there, and would you like one, Councilmember? Okay. Thank you so much for waiting. Sorry about the delay, Neil. You've got two minutes. Go for it.
Thank you. I am in favor of building low-income and mixed-income neighborhoods in Seattle. I am in favor of building low-income and mixed-income neighborhoods in Magnolia. I am opposed to building low-income and mixed-income neighborhoods in what is probably the most natural and most beautiful park in Seattle, Discovery Park. Make no mistake about it, the homes currently to the east of Discovery Park are not in Discovery Park. On the other hand, Fort Lawton is in Discovery Park. It always has been. And when you add construction, destruction, traffic, noise, infrastructure, and commuters for 238 apartments, townhouses, and row houses, in addition to 266 parking spaces covering 34 acres, you will be negatively affecting this park, not only while the housing is being built, but also after it has been completed. I understand that the land is basically free, so it's a good deal for the city. But if you go ahead with this project, you will be trading some money now for the desecration of Discovery Park for years to come. This is your choice, but I'd hope that you would think beyond the short-term profits in favor of the long-term preservation of the park. Fort Lawton is not the place to build. This is not the Seattle way. This is not who we are. There are other places to build housing in Seattle, even in Magnolia. Find one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Neil. And you're welcome to leave your comments if you'd like any written comments as well to be left with us. Karen Nims, followed by Calvin Jones. Hi, Karen.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I can't read my notes, so I was going to say, I live a block...
Can you pull down the mic just a little? There you go. Perfect.
I live a block from Discovery Park. I take the bus on the corner of 36th and Government Way. I took the bus today to come down to this hearing. The Fort Lawton area is just very close, a half a block walk. I'm totally in favor of this project. Affordable housing is so necessary in this city. Across the street from me, on 35th and Government Way, a, like, probably nine-plex has just been, the people have had to move out. They're either going to demolish it and build something new and large and expensive or redevelop it. That affordable housing is gone. I've lived in Magnolia for 30 years. I've watched that affordable housing disappear all over. We have a City of Seattle Public Housing on the corner of 34th and Government Way, Seattle Housing Authority. There's no problems with those people. I don't see there would be any problems with the low-income elderly people in Discovery Park. And having elderly and children live together is the best way for all families to be. So I thank you for the time that you've put into this, and we don't need to talk about it anymore. We just need to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nims. Calvin Jones, followed by Laura Low Bernstein.
Hi, my name is Calvin Jones, and I'm an organizer for Tech4Housing and a renter in Madison Valley. I share a passion for parks and open space like a lot of people in this room, and I think that Discovery Park is one of the most beautiful parks that we have here in the city. On a sunny day, the views in the Puget Sound are, you know, incomparable. I think our biggest problem with parks and open space in the city is not that we don't have enough of it, it's just that the parks that we do have are not accessible to most people in the city, especially renters. Discovery Park is nearly exclusively surrounded by detached, single-family homes, which virtually ensures that only people who have enough wealth to afford a single-family home have access to that park. I think that the best thing we could do to improve park access for people in the city is to allow more types of housing around our beautiful green spaces so that we can share them with everyone. I'd also like to address just the amount of affordable housing at Fort Lawton. I think it's a little bit disheartening to go through a 15-year process and only come out with 238 units of affordable housing at the end, but I think of Fort Lawton as kind of a practice round for the next time we get public land available. There was an article not so long ago that the Washington National Guard is going to release 25 acres of land to the city, and I think it's really an opportunity to, instead of getting 238 units after 15 years, maybe we can get 5,000 units of affordable housing after five years, or 10,000 after two years. Why not? I think the affordability crisis is a crisis in Seattle and deserves a crisis-level response, and that we should dream really, really big with the public land that the city receives. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Laura Low and followed by Renee Chu. Hi, Laura.
Hello. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to everyone that's worked so hard and sat through so many hours of testimony from neighbors that are afraid of change and afraid of new neighbors. We have Catholic Housing Services, Habitat for Humanity. There hasn't been enough emphasis that this land is going to be for folks to have homeownership opportunities as well as renters. And the United Indians of All Tribes has been involved, as well as the Office of Housing's tireless work on this. And I've sat through a lot of those meetings. I'm a volunteer. Most of us that are here speaking for housing are volunteers. There's been some implication that we're paid activists or been bused in from other places. I live right south of the Ballard Bridge. I could take a really long walk or a shorter bike ride to this land. I took the bus here today. When we look and we zoom out at the county level, this is a transit-rich neighborhood. This is an amenity-rich neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that has employment opportunities within 30, 40 minutes. I have friends that commute two hours by bus each way from Maple Valley. We're not talking about Maple Valley. This isn't remote. This isn't on some island. This is part of our city. It's near downtown. There's grocery stores in Magnolia. There's grocery stores in Inner Bay. It's going to have a big employment center with Expedia. And the claims about the folks here being isolated and not having services are just not accurate. It's a cover for fear of change, and I'm speaking that part on behalf of myself. As a new neighbor, I have felt that fear for my neighbors. They're afraid of me. They're afraid that I'm destroying the character of their neighborhood, and it's very sad that they've expressed that. I want to put on my Share the Cities hat real quick and say we work on land parcels and we want to keep public land in public hands, and let's look at doing this times a lot. I want to echo what Calvin said, and thank you for everything that everyone's done.
Thank you, Laura. Renee? Renee's going to be followed by Tara Miller-Berry and then Maura Semet.
Hi, everybody, and thank you to the council for all the work you've done so much on this project. I grew up in Seattle, and I grew up in another fancy neighborhood in Seattle, and I think that when we were in the MHA hearings, someone from Queen Anne made the point that a lot of the outer neighborhoods in Seattle, like Lashai, like Magnolia, haven't had to do their share for MHA, and so I do think that there is an opportunity for some of the outer, wealthier neighborhoods in Seattle like Magnolia to do their part in providing, in making space for affordable housing. And like Calvin said, thank you for your great comment. Hopefully, Fort Lawton is just a proving ground for Lowellhurst, for Windermere, for Sandpoint to also be able to make space for affordable housing in the future. I also want to acknowledge the comments about intruding on the serenity of Discovery Park. It's a beautiful space, but I do want people to remember that all of Discovery Park used to be a fort. You know, when I heard about the project, I put up a Google alert for Fort Lawton, and I thought I'd hear about a lot of affordable housing meetings, and instead, almost every week, I heard an obituary about someone who had been disembarked from Fort Lawton during World War II or the Korean War, and I learned that there had been over 400 structures on Discovery Park at that time that are now taken apart, and that there were 52,000 servicemen at a time at Discovery Park. So I, I mean, it's a beautiful space, but I think people should remember what our land is for, and that if we're able to house more people, then we should take that advantage.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Tara Miller. Benny, followed by Mara Semet.
Hello. Hi, my name is Tara Miller-Berry, and I live right across the street from Fort Lawton on 36th Avenue. Thank you so much for considering building affordable housing in my backyard. My family would be really excited to welcome new neighbors if this redevelopment proposal is approved. This proposal matters a lot to me because I worked with families and individuals experiencing homelessness in Seattle for five years, and I know how hard it is to find affordable housing anywhere in King County, let alone in Seattle. Any of these amazing people would be great candidates for the variety of housing being proposed, and we could really use communities like this built in every neighborhood in Seattle. Housing and rent prices are soaring in Seattle, and people of color, immigrants, and low-income workers are being forced out daily. Magnolia is a pretty isolated and segregated neighborhood even for Seattle, and it's time we make amends for the ways we have kept people out. This proposal is a good step towards remedying our city's immorally slow response to the affordable housing crisis and for my neighborhood's culture of exclusivism and elitism. Please make this redevelopment plan a reality. I'd be happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you so much. Mara Semet, followed by Brian Quant.
My name is Marva Semay.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening to us, and I haven't heard any mention about the wildlife that has taken residence in Discovery Park since the military left. And the great heron that carry their nesting material over Fort Lawton from Discovery Park to nest near the locks right now. I'm told that they used to be closer. And I didn't hear anything about all the dead whales that are coming ashore. In fact, there's more whales this year in 2019 than all of 2018. I didn't hear about the owls who like their night sky. I didn't hear about the owls who like their night sky. What are they going to do when some 300 homes-plus homes are going to be lit up adjacent to Discovery Park? We have one chance. Fort Lawton is contiguous to Discovery Park. Let's access that and acquire that for Park to allow all the wildlife that cannot stand here in front of you and say, "Help, help, give us more habitat." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Semet. Brian Quant, followed by Marty Koestra.
So as someone who grew up in Magnolia with parents and one of my grandparents in Magnolia, I just want to say that this is a fantastic opportunity that this redevelopment plan presents. This is a fantastic opportunity to chip away at our housing crisis, add gentle density that fits with neighborhood character, and provide housing for working people and the elderly. This is a great opportunity to provide more green space, more room for nature, more room for those animals who live there. And also with that idea of reducing the amount of paved area, both in the redevelopment area and in Seattle in particular, one thought about that might be a little bit granular. Using tile and brick paving, more permeable. It also serves as a traffic calming measure. People drive slower over it. Something that you could run with a little bit. In addition, this also provides recreational area. As a person who was formerly an SBS student, this would have been amazing to have some playfields there, pretty close to my home. There's some other opportunities that go beyond what are mentioned in the Plan 2, including some rezoning in the vicinity for some commercial or mixed use, to provide additional nearby amenities, such as more grocery stores or other opportunities such as that, improving transit frequency with the 33. And something that's been mentioned here is, yes, it would be great to build elsewhere. Yes, we should do that, and we should also build here, too. So overall, this is this fantastic opportunity for more people, more families, more kids, more elderly, to live in and enjoy Magnolia and District 7 and Seattle. I urge you to, today, approve the reason ordinance, approve the resolution. Let's develop Fort Lawton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marty Koestra, followed by Daniela Lipsong-Ing. Hi, Marty. Welcome.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Marty Koestra. I work for the Housing Development Consortium. We are a 180-member association focused on housing in King County. I'm excited to be at this point, finally. When I arrived here in 2008, there was a folder on my desk at Habitat for Humanity that said Fort Lawton on it. This has been a long journey, as Councilmember Brian well knows. With every moment that has passed, however, the need for affordable housing has grown. We now stop waiting, and we act. We need to turn this underutilized land into at least 235 affordable homes. With the scale of need for affordability in our region, at least 44,000 additional affordable homes needed in the next five years, and we continue to need that amount every five years until we get to 2040, until we get caught up with the lack of housing that we have, we have a responsibility, in every neighborhood, in every opportunity, to find out where we can provide more affordable housing. We need every tool in our toolkit, and we need to use every piece of surplus land we can possibly find. We are meeting this moment with determination that it demands. I ask you to act. And finally, I'd like to just make a comment or two. I heard some remarks about the Catholic Church and others. Two of our members, Catholic Housing Services and Habitat for Humanity, which I worked for for 24 years of my life, are two of the most stellar members that we have in this community. The Catholic community is standing in the gap like no one else in this entire community or in this region, working with the most vulnerable population, doing the work that most of us would not want to do. We're talking about two organizations that really care. They know what they're doing. They know how to build community. And Habitat is about Habitat for Humanity, as well as everything else. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marty. Daniela Lipsong-Ing, followed by Alicia Ruiz. Welcome, Daniela.
Thank you. The city council is going to be putting housing on the far end of Magnolia, but says that there is not enough money to rebuild the Magnolia Bridge. The Magnolia Bridge is the main thoroughway for transit in and out of Magnolia, and if you take away the bridge, you're creating more traffic for the buses. You can't reasonably ask to put in more units of housing while also not having money to replace the bridge. At the same time, you were saying that Fort Lawton redevelopment, you'll have 24/7 monitoring for the low-barrier individuals. This city right now is unable to maintain a solid oversight of the individuals in low-barrier housing. When talking with local police officers, they mentioned the numerous calls that take them to low-barrier housing that the city has put in, and within six months, the units are dirty and filled with drug paraphernalia. I would ask you, council members, to talk with the local police officers who go into these types of housings every day and see firsthand what is going on. The fact that the city believes these individuals will be, that will be living here, need 24/7 monitoring is an indicator of what will truly be going on. Logistically, you are isolating low-income individuals. There's no bus line that goes directly to an affordable grocery store, and no bus that goes from Magnolia to Ballard. As a current District 7 candidate, I am not able to support this project as it stands. There are no entry-level available jobs, no bus lines, no affordable grocery stores. We should buy lots where you get an investment for your return. Look at 15th. Look at the Armory. Entry-level jobs, major bus lines, grocery stores, the future ST3 line. We can't just add more buses or bus routes. Right now, there are over 600 bus driver openings, so how are you going to do that? You can't get park space back. How much more money are we going to put into this project to add buses, add a grocery store, and add entry-level jobs? It's a lot more than $90 million.
Thank you very much. Alicia Ruiz, I hope I'm saying that right, followed by Mason Rhodes. Welcome. And just pull this microphone on up. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Ruiz, representing the Master Builders Association tonight. And we recognize that there is an affordable housing crisis, both locally and nationally. To help address this crisis and create much-needed affordable housing in Seattle, we fully support the Fort Lawton redevelopment plan and urge the city to approve it quickly. After years of discussion, planning with stakeholders, public review and debate, it is time to adopt and implement the plan to create affordable housing here in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alicia. No problem. And our last two, thank you so much for, Councilmember Brian. Our last two are Mason Rhodes and David Morring. Welcome, Mr. Rhodes.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm a member of Friends of Discovery Park. I've lived in Magnolia for, I don't know, 30 or more years. But I'm for low-cost housing, but not in Discovery Park. As the city grows, more park space is required. And that's the main point, but there's one other thing, just to loosen things up a little bit. And I'm going to try this. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York island, from the Redwood Forest to the Gulf Stream water, this land is made for you and me.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your Vets for Peace hat, too. Thank you so much for your service. David Morring, welcome. Thank you so much, David.
Can I give a copy of the--? I was going to put--. Okay, I just gave you a three-page handout that hopefully you can follow along with real quickly.
Appreciate it.
David Morring, I'm here with the Magnolia Community Council, who is actually meeting in about half hour. As you've seen in the FEIS, the Magnolia Community Council has supported the alternative number one. We think it's good to bring affordable housing to our community, so thank you for that. Want to point to the diagrams I just pointed out in that, I'm not sure if we have alternative number one, if we can show on the screen or not, but alternative number one, as you know, is basically to the right side of North Texas Way, the units that are apartment-style type of thing. And then to the east side of North Texas Way is the townhouses and row houses. So that, what's happening on the west side is really the LR2, what you're talking about doing. What's happening on the east side is really just LR1, low-rise zone. So what page two represents is currently how this is being described as being LR2 all across the board. So in fact, you'd have, instead of row houses and townhouses, you could have the possibility of the whole thing being multi-story buildings up to 40 feet. And the last page basically shows how you should be describing in your legislation with the LR1 towards the east and LR2 towards the west. If you don't do that, then you're going to be exceeding what was conveyed in the FEIS, which would be greater than the scope of work. I have to disagree with Mr., or Kittle, is it?
Kittle, yes.
Kittle, I'm sorry. Because he mentioned that the FEIS, and I looked through all 1,000 pages, said it was looked at for the four stories, and I didn't see any alternatives, 1, 2, 3, or the preferred alternative that showed with that level LR2 development. So please take a look at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the handout. Appreciate it. That, I think we have one more folks, folks who are interested in testifying, and if you haven't yet signed up and you're interested, we will still take your name, so you're welcome to sign up. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. You know, I don't know, I've spent a lot of time, I guess, in my life experience around folks that are caught up in this homelessness stuff. And, you know, I've heard a lot of concerns from a lot of people tonight, and there, there's none that aren't valid. You know, I think about where we've been with this type of housing, whether it's like we used to have the High Point projects or the stuff over by Harborview, and, you know, what we're doing now is such a step up from there. So we're getting better. You meet all kinds. There are people that you see amazing success stories, and then you see problems like we've seen with folks that just can't get off whatever, this and that and the other thing. You know, I haven't seen the specifics of this, but it seems like a good idea to me. You know, I haven't, I'm more of a big-picture guy, and I look at the numbers, and I see where our city is going. I see the affordability stuff getting so much less because of just the economic side of this, how the economy nationally is going to shape and fix us. You know, we were so penalized in 2008 with the financial crisis because we didn't have that problem here. And a large portion of that problem is what has created the financial issues we have in the city today. And as this goes a different direction long-term, that will, in a lot of ways, the affordability piece, will work itself out for those folks that are willing to work. The challenge is, is there are a lot of folks on the streets that just are not going to get reintegrated back into the system, and that's where we really struggle still. And that's where I think a lot of this stuff and the creative ideas we have really work, and I'm very hopeful that we can get this done and get how many projects we need to get done to at least get those numbers right for where we're going. Because where we're going is going to be such a bigger city that we at least have to keep pace with where we've been in the past.
Thank you. Before you go, do you mind just repeating your name into the microphone for the record?
Sean McEckren.
Thank you, Sean. And we'll have the folks who are also signed up, sign up as you come up, and just say your name into the microphone if you haven't yet already. So let's see who we have next on our list here. Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Max Baker, and then Jesse Simpson. I apologize for folks who may have been lining up. I didn't have the last sheet, so if we could have Max and then Jesse. Hi, Max.
Hello. This is my first time at a--
Get a little closer.
Sorry.
There you go.
This is my first time at a council meeting.
Welcome.
Council hearing. So I've lived in Seattle for about six, seven years now. In that time, lived in Lower Queen Anne, moved to Ballard, currently live in West Seattle, served as an AmeriCorps, went to grad school, got my first professional job. And I learned about Fort Lawton the first year that I moved here. And since that time, nothing has happened. And I've been waiting in earnest to see what's going to happen, and six years later, here we are again. I currently live in the Riverview area of West Seattle, and the CL Housing Authority is building a new building on Del Ridge with 79 units planned, just over an acre. And I'm in full support of that project. I'm kind of shocked to see that that's almost a third of all of the affordable homes that are proposed for a 10-acre site. At that, doing that math, it seems that we could have 700 units on 10 acres if we're using the same density for the CL Housing Authority project. Same arguments could be made why the Del Ridge site isn't appropriate. Del Ridge is a food desert. It's far away from downtown. It's not near any amenities. I still think the Del Ridge neighborhood's a great place for low-income housing, affordable housing, market-rate housing. And I don't think anyone living in that neighborhood would have anything bad to say about their experience, except for those issues of access to food and easier access walking around the neighborhood as any resident would have. So for this site to be ever considered not good enough, just seems beyond reason. So I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Jesse Simpson. Hi, Jesse.
Hi, I'm Jesse Simpson. This land is only our land if we can afford to live here. When we started talking about redeveloping Fort Lawton in 2004, I was in fourth grade. It's been held up in appeal for 15 years because of neighborhood activists who are opposed to accommodating more low-income and moderate-income folks within their neighborhoods, and that's a travesty. We need to build as much affordable housing as we can to stem the homelessness crisis and affordability crisis that plague everyone who rents or wants to rent, wants to live in Seattle. There are currently only six different affordable apartments, affordable buildings, within all of Magnolia. They have combined 18 units. This housing is necessary. It will provide people with access to green space and access to a bus stop that will eventually get them to light rail at 15th Avenue. And by 2035, it's only going to be 10 minutes away from that Inner Bay 15th stop. This is, this can be transit-oriented development, and it provides amazing access to green space, something that's sorely lacking for many of our affordable housing developments. I urge you to support this plan and move forward as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jesse. Elizabeth Campbell, we have you on the list here as well. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I submitted a written comment to you--
Oh, thank you.
--at 5:00. So I'm here today representing the Discovery Park Community Alliance, myself and a multiple of people that belong to safe and affordable Seattle. The thing is, is that the city was charged from the very beginning to involve the public and to make something out of Fort Lawton property that had the buy-in of a majority of the city. And it's that unfortunate history that has brought the city and this project to where it is, because the city took a heavy hand and decided to exclude out of the mix the use of the property 100% for parkland. It was always possible to add additional homes for the homeless and the low-income off-site. That has never changed, and the city unfortunately has misled people about what the conditions were for the BRAC. It gives me no pleasure to have this drug around, and it'll be drug around for more years. It's like this has been misstep after misstep on the part of the city, and I think the city should step up and take its part in all of this. Unfortunately, Mr., I was in fourth grade, he doesn't see that and how-- Unfortunately, Mr., I was in fourth grade, he doesn't see that and how this all came about.
Ms. Campbell, keep your remarks directed to me. Thank you.
Anyway, the final part of it is, is we're going to continue to oppose this project. We sent out a mailing on Friday to 26,000 people, which is far more than the city's ever done, and invited them to step up and be part of this process and to oppose the housing and to advocate for adding Fort Lawton to Discovery Park. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Welcome. And if you could say your name for the record, and then we will have you sign in before you leave.
Hi, my name is Angela Compton. I'm a resident of District 7. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was actually just planning on listening, but I really didn't want this to end on a sour note. I have grown up in Seattle. I grew up housing in stable and kind of lived all over the Puget Sound. I went to three different high schools. I've worked in homelessness. I've been a case manager. Currently, I work in an organization trying to lower barriers to housing and give people more access to housing in our neighborhoods. And Magnolia is a wonderful place to live. Like, I take the bus up from my Belltown apartment and go hang out in Discovery Park. It's beautiful. It's really easy to access from downtown. So I'm assuming the access the other way is exactly the same. So I don't really see how people think Magnolia is so remote and removed from Seattle. It's part of our urban space. And we need to be building up our urban spaces to preserve our green spaces for those little animals that I was hearing about. So if we don't continue building up our urban spaces and making sure we give people new green options, we are going to continue to see our animals going extinct. We're going to continue seeing climate change. We really need to see innovative changes like utilizing surplus city land for affordable housing for low-income people and making sure that children have access to parks because that's what we want in our city. And this is a wonderful plan. So as someone who lives in the district where this plan is going to take place, I very much support this. And the only thing I would ask is that we maybe double the amount of affordable housing going on this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela. Is there anybody else who was inspired to come to the microphone? Okay, well, I really want to say thank you to the almost 30 people who came to testify tonight. I know many of you have been in many community meetings over the last 15 years. Thank you for coming to the fore that we've now had just this year alone. This will wrap up our public hearing this evening on the city's application for the federal surplus property at Fort Lawton. The application, again, includes the Fort Lawton Redevelopment Plan, the 2019 update and appendices. It includes the Homeless Housing Submission, Appendix H, to Fort Lawton Redevelopment Plan, 2019 Update, and the legally binding agreement, the Draft Opinion Letter. That's all included in the application that you can find on our website. We will be having another conversation. So if you just can't wait for the next discussion, there will be five. Conversation coming up again in our committee on the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee at 9:30 a.m. on June 6th, right here in council chambers. I want to thank all of you for your generous time, for coming this evening, for your written comments and your public comment. For folks who are watching at home and listening on KUOW, we appreciate everybody for writing in, calling in, and for providing us with your feedback. And this will continue on June 6th at 9:30. Thank you again. Applause for all of your attendance and to our incredible staff for keeping us going this evening. The meeting is adjourned.